Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman.
Here.
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
This evening, we have words of inspiration from Pastor Jeff Johnson of Calvary Hills Church. Pastor Jeff?
Good evening. First of all, I gotta tell you guys are brave to give a pastor a podium like this. I could go for awhile. But in all seriousness, first of all, I just wanted to thank you, Mayor and council members, for all your dedication and devotion to our city. As a homeowner and as a small business owner, it's my personal opinion, you guys are doing a great job, and I think it benefits me personally and professionally. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you guys very much for what you're doing. I know leadership is a difficult thing. You have to make decisions, and sometimes people agree, and sometimes people do not agree. So, I just appreciate your guys' wisdom and your input on this city. And so, I'd ask if I could just pray real quickly and just ask God to give you guys wisdom on this meeting.
Please.
Dear Heavenly Father, God, we come before you right now and just ask, on behalf of the residents of this city, that you would guide our leadership. Lord, that you would give them wisdom. Lord, that you would help them to have open ears, to hear the heart of the people of this community, and that they would represent them first and foremost. But, Lord, we do just pray for this meeting. I just pray that you would give all those who are in a position of leadership and are making decisions to be able to truly make the wise decision, Lord, for this city and for this community and for its residents. In Jesus' name, I pray.
Amen. Thank you, Jeff. Deputy Mayor, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you put your right hand over your heart and follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. And we have a special presentation tonight. We actually have two on the agenda, but we only are going to do one. And if, gentlemen, if you would join me up front for those presentations? We have some very special awards this evening that have to do with the leadership and the creativity of the Arts Council. And in society, over the years, centuries, and over the millennia, one of the things that has not been lost in societies are the ability to address the arts, whether that's performing arts, literary, song, music, comedy, drama, whatever it is. And our Arts Council in this city has elevated that to a new level in our city, to the benefit of all of us, and to the benefit of our youth, and to the complement of our public education system within our school district. And so, with that being said, we have some very special presentations to give tonight. And I'd like to invite our Arts Council spokespeople up to the podium, as well as our awardees, who are going to be receiving certificates tonight, because I believe that we have some essay contest winners, and we're actually going to have a reading from the grand prize winner, I believe. That's the plan.
Hello. My name is Shirley Wyble, and I'm the Arts Council Menifee Literary Arts Chair. And I would like to welcome our winners here tonight, and their friends and family, and the school officials that have come to honor their students as well. Arts Council Menifee coordinated a youth creative writing contest for students in grades six through eight in the Menifee area. The theme of the contest was "Three Things to Make the World a Better Place and Why." Students from the area's four middle schools were asked to write their ideas and back them up with evidence and examples. All entries were submitted by May 30th, and then the Arts Council Menifee Literary Arts Division judged them for originality, opinions, and factual backup.
I am Ally Thorworth, also with the Arts Council Literary Division. The overall grand prize winner was Abigail Young from Ethan A. Chase Middle School. She'll receive a Galaxy Tab Four Inch. She will receive her prize at the School Board meeting next week. And her Galaxy Tab Four was generously provided by the Menifee Best Buy Store at a greatly discounted price, and it also has a one-year damage warranty. And she'll also receive a complete writer's kit. There were three additional complete writers kits awarded as a top prize for each school. The first one went to Elizabeth Camarena from Ethan A. Chase Middle School. And the next winner was Casey Gamel from Hans Christiansen Middle School. And also Blessin Simpson from Menifee Valley Middle School. And now, a member of our Literary Division, a professional author, Bob White, will read Abigail Young's essay.
"Three Things to Make the World a Better Place," by Abigail Young. The world can't be changed in a day, just like Rome wasn't built in one. This doesn't mean that the world can't be changed, but it's a process. Maybe you start slow with just one person at a time. Sure, it may take a long time, but isn't the world worth it? Before you change the world, you have to ask yourself, is the world worth it? Am I worth it? The answers to both of these questions should be yes. Yes, I am worth it, and it is worth my time and my devotion to change the world. The world isn't just about global warming and the environment. We have been so consumed with the idea of saving the planet that we forget to save ourselves. We forget to remember that our happiness and the happiness of others is important, too. By just putting a smile on someone's face, or by consoling someone that has cried, you're changing the world. Maybe it's not a big change, but we make up the world alongside of every tree and every blade of grass. Just one person's smile makes the world a little happier and a little more joyous. A lot of hatred and cruelty exists in the world. The reason is because no one can bring themselves to forgive. To forgive the person that wronged them, or to forgive the person that wronged another, forgiveness not only sets the person that wronged you free, but sets you free as well. Forgiveness is like the difference between war and peace. Even if you're not doing it for them, do it for yourself. Hatred controls people. It can turn a good person into a bad person. Don't let hatred control the world. Forgive, forgive. It takes sacrifice to change the world. Sacrifice means giving up something for someone who needs it more. I'm not just talking about giving up a day to help the homeless. I'm talking about buying your sister a toy with the money you planned on using for a new game for yourself, or playing a game that you don't enjoy because you know your friend really likes it. Every day, an opportunity arises to make a sacrifice. Whether you take the opportunity or not is your decision. A simple, kind gesture, such as sacrifice, can make the world a better place. Everyone can change the world for the better, whether you smile, forgive, or sacrifice. Every little thing changes the world. Soon, these little things turn into big things. You start to notice the changes. Together, we can all change the world if we let the good that hides in all of us shine through. If you give, you will receive. One person can be strong, but together, we can be unstoppable.
Would you agree?
Yes.
And so, with that being said, those are truly inspiring words, and I would hope that from your heart and the hearts of you other three ladies, the advice that you've given in your essays and the one that was just read here tonight, every adult in this room should heed that advice and move forward with a new vigor to do those things that you suggested in your essay. Well done to you. And on behalf of the entire City Council, we'd like to present you with this Certificate of Achievement, Abigail, from Ethan A. Chase Middle School, your grand prize winner for this essay contest. Congratulations to you. And likewise, a certificate of achievement to Casey Gamel from Hans Christiansen Middle And Blessin Simpson from Menifee Valley Middle School. Last, but certainly not least, Elizabeth Camarena from Ethan A. Chase Middle School. Congratulations to you. I'll squeeze in for a photo. Now, since you poured your heart out in the essay, you may not want to speak, but I will give you the floor if you'd like to say some more encouraging words. If not, it's okay. Your choice. You're good? All right. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Wow. Truly inspiring and from the heart. That was a writing that I have not heard in some time. Good advice, to be sure. Onto our approval of the meeting minutes from the meeting of June 4, 2014. Are there any modifications to the minutes? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Thank you, all ladies and gentlemen, for coming tonight. We appreciate everything that you do. Agenda approval or modification? Madam Clerk, do we have any modifications to the agenda that, other than we've already talked about?
Right, no. Just pulling that one item off for later.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Onto public comments. Would you please call the first speaker?
Yes, Your Honor. Ron Page.
Hi, and thank you for giving me this time to talk to you guys. I was here last month at your meeting to request a couple of items to be repaired on Augusta Drive. And I want to thank Jonathan Smith, as well as the Public Works Department, for repairing one of those items. The streets have been, the cracks have been repaired on it, and so, we're real happy about However, when I gave the petition to you last month, the biggest problem was the cut-through traffic. And so, I'm here now tonight to request that we can get some type of calming, to calm the traffic down in that area, because it's used as another Cherry Hills. And instead of going to Cherry Hills, they'll cut right through their speed. It's late at night. It's early in the morning. It's Sundays. It's holidays. And so, it's habitual motorists. So, hopefully, we can get something done in that regard for the street, because these are the 50 core seniors that live here that have come here to retire. And when they get woke up at night at 10 o'clock, it's pretty saddening, you know. It's kind of like I have 50 moms now and then calling me, asking me if I could do something for them. But I don't mind it at all, and I'm here to help them. And the Sun City Civic Association also endorses this, so that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Marcella Santiago.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi. Thank you for having me here tonight, and I also want to thank Ms. Bennett for being very patient with me on this process. She's been very helpful to me. But I'm here-
Could you speak closer to the mic for us? There you go. Yeah, just lean into it. Thanks.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I am here today to bring to light an animal control administration issue regarding a supposed municipal code or ordinance that you may call 06.08.020A, as in Adam, to try to find some type of review for this ordinance. The first issue I have is that there's no documentation that I'm able to find or can be found for citizens to have the opportunity to fully understand the code, to ensure that they're complying with it. There is, however, a similar county ordinance of 630 that's displayed upon the city of Menifee website, which is written, there is a violation section of 20 that imposes the same fines that Animal Friends is providing. However, this violation section can be misinterpreted because it's using the words guilty of infraction as well as upon conviction. Moreover, there is a separate section, which is Section 22 of the county code, that covers administrative citations, which is what LEAF is currently issuing out to those people who are over 21 days late paying their, or renewing their license fees for their animals. And under the administrative citations, under Section C, it's the service of citation. And it states that animal control officers shall attempt to deliver the administrative citation, and if no one can be located at the property where the violation occurred, then the administrative citation shall be posted in a conspicuous place, on or near the property, and a copy mailed by certified mail. The second issue that I have with the administrative citation being issued by Animal Friends is it's in addition to a late fee. So, I'd like to have the council please review and renew this process. I believe that issuing a $20 late fee, as well as a $50 administrative citation equalling $70, is quite excessive for being over 21 days late. Also, a person who's complying may be late on paying the license, but they become double penalized. Once they pay, they receive an additional mailing that says they have a $50 administrative citation. So, the main goal that we want is for compliance. And applying a late fee, also an additional citation after that's paid, seems unnecessary, and it deters citizens from trying to license. So, I'm asking that the council review and renew this supposed ordinance that I'm not able to find.
Marcella, that's your time.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay.
Mr. August.
Quick question for you, ma'am. Do you represent an organization?
I represent myself and my own home that I own.
Myself, okay. All right. And why, can I, may I ask you why this is of concern to you?
Yes, because I, the mailboxes have been getting broken into, and so, I don't ever receive any personal mail to my home. The community mailboxes in my neighborhood have been broken into several times. I don't know if council's aware of that being an issue, but they have been. And so, I have foregone receiving any personal mail. So, when they sent me a renewal notice, I didn't get it until I finally, one day, went down there to check.
Thank you.
And I did pay the late fee, and then they sent me a $50 citation thereafter.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tom Thurman.
Good evening. I'm usually up here to complain or ask for something, or request something for the citizens of Sun City. That's not the case tonight. I'm up here to thank you, all of you, and especially Jonathan, for the sign on the freeway. We finally got it. It took us six years, but we did get it. And also, thank Rob for the speed sign on Carmel. I don't know that it's not any good, but it's got some notice. It's there. Thank you very much, especially you, Jonathan. Thanks, Tom.
Next speaker, please.
Peter Thorwath.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Three things I'd like to mention. Residents of Menifee Lakes appreciate that there is now a no-U-turn sign at the intersection of Antelope and Sunstream. However, no one is enforcing it, and people are ignoring it and making U-turns there every single day of the week. So, the likelihood of a fatal accident there is still very high. Please, in whatever way you can, please ask the police to enforce that no-U-turn. Number two, Walmart is apparently breaking ground for a new store this week in Paris. It's hard to believe that they'll also build one at Scott and at McCall, so in whatever negotiations the city has with Walmart, I would be aware that they might be trying to manipulate the administration in one fashion or another to see who they can get the best concessions from. The third thing is, the three signs, new signs for the town center entrance seem premature to some people. I hope that if and when they get any graffiti arrangements are in place to clean that graffiti off as soon as possible, because signs with graffiti would be worse than no signs at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Katie Munir.
Good evening. I want to point out that we have five council members up here, or four. Mayor doesn't really count. But they all represent a certain area. Just because you don't represent an area is what I meant by that. But the other four represent a certain area. I want to know why this council is making deals with certain individuals and no transparency in what's going on. Before Mr. Phillips was a planning commissioner, he was giving informational information to the city. And that's per his own words. Why was his input being taken into consideration when he was just a citizen like the rest of us? Most notably, he gave input on the Santa Rosa Academy and Audie Murphy Ramp Site, saying the soil was safe. We are taking the word of average Joe's citizen when there have been reports documented by a renowned doctor who had a very different view on the land in this valley, and yet not one person had taken heed to that. I have a copy of that report if anybody had liked to see it. I'm sure you don't want to see it, but- Mr. Phillips has some certificates for varying things, but where is his medical degree saying he can give advice on the health and safety regarding toxic material on the fields? The city refused to listen to experts, but listens to one person. It seems this is being done now by including Ms. Thompson in backdoor meetings with the mayor and some council members. I want to know how and why deals are being made with people that have no vested interest in this city. Is she a homeowner? No, she's not. Of course, our own mayor has no vested interest either, as he is not a homeowner, but took out loans on a home under false pretenses, and then went belly-up on that home, causing other people's property value to go down. But it does look good that he now lives in the lake, I guess. According to Mr. Lees Meyer in Menifee 24/7, Mr. Lees Meyer being a planning commissioner, he said, "I'd like to have a committee within our district made up of a resident or two for each of the various areas around the district. Residents would serve as channels to communicate neighborhood issues to me, and ultimately back to the council as a whole. It seems to me that's what the council member's job is to do. They are to get input from the citizens. They are to get input on what needs to be done in their area, and that is not being done. You guys are still making backdoor deals with people that have no interest in this city, and it needs to stop. If you want people to give input, go to your district and go door-to-door and ask people. Talk to people. Don't send other representatives to meet with these people behind closed doors and make deals that are underhanded. It undermines the whole transparency of this city, and we have no transparency. Everybody knows that."
Two things before I go on to the next speaker. The reason why Mr. Phillips has been called upon to provide information is because for perhaps maybe the third or fourth time, Mr. Phillips is a state-certified environmental engineer from the state of California, and so, therefore, he's an expert. And he provided, excuse me, it is my time. And he provided expert testimony. In terms of Ms. Thompson, she's a citizen just like you, and has input just like every person sitting in this audience and who is not sitting in this audience, and her voice counts equally as yours. That's why she has a voice on an issue that's near and dear to her heart, and near and dear to Councilmember Furman. Next speaker, please.
Grant Beckland.
Hi, I am Grant Beckland, and I'm representing the group of neighbors that live in the three square miles surrounded by Briggs, Leon, Scott, and Old Newport Road. And we would respectfully request that the city annex this area and protect it from the actions of the county. When we moved to this community, we moved there to enjoy the rural lifestyle and have relied on the general plans of the county and the cities to protect and encourage this way of life. The recent decision by the Board of Supervisors is putting this area in jeopardy. The Board allowed a general plan amendment to proceed with 800 lots and an aquatic center over the objections of virtually all the surrounding residents, with not one neighbor supporting this project. The 64 homeowners surrounding this project have lived in this area for a combined 1,100 years, submitted a petition to the Board requesting denial of the project. The Board ignored the staff report and homeowners, and is allowing an out-of-town developer on property owned for less than six months to proceed with this project. There are thousands of subdivision homes on small lots surrounding this area. The proposal to squeeze more small lots in the last remaining rural area of this community is unwarranted. This one project would quadruple the number of lots in this area. This area should be preserved for estate residential homes on large lots. This proposed annexation contains roughly 190 homes on 280 lots, for an average lot size of six acres, and is located within the city's proposed sphere of influence. I'm presenting to you the 110 signatures of the property owners who support this annexation to the city.
We, over to the, when you're done, sir, give it to the city clerk.
I would request that the city initiate this annexation as soon as possible to protect and preserve this rural area from urban encroachment. The neighbors would extend an invitation to all of you to meet and discuss this further. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Before you step away and give your petition to the city clerk, just be aware that our sphere of influence right now is to our contiguous borders. By law, that happened when we incorporated. And we're going through a municipal service review under state law, which is, which happens at the five-year mark. And the agency that handles those annexations, spheres of influence-type decisions, is the local agency formation commission with the county. And our municipal services review is coming up for their hearing in either July or September of this year. So, I would encourage you and your neighbors to make sure that you pay attention to when that hearing is, and come and voice your concern to that body as well, as well as giving us your petition.
Correct. I met with LAFCO, and they provided me with what you were proposing.
Marvelous. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Vicki Reynolds.
Good evening. I'm here just to make you aware of what the ice cream vendors in their-
Good evening. I'm here just to make you aware of what the ice cream vendors in their ice cream trucks are selling to children. My grandson, who's 11, attends Maceview, and on his way home from school, he purchased -- I'm not brandishing this.
Uh-oh.
This. Now, I'll show you the real thing, but it was supposed to be sold for $7. My grandson had four, and he said, "I'll give it to you for four." There are so many warnings on this, including the label "ages 18 and up." Now, when he said he had an airsoft gun, "Yeah, I'm grandma, I'm soft." It sounds like, you know, marshmallows. I didn't think too much of it. But when he went to play with his friends with this, and he came running up when his mom got home, "Look," and he dropped it in the street, and fortunately, it broke. But one of the precautions is, one of the warnings is, that because it may be mistaken for a firearm, that it may not be used in the open. Now, you tell me what an 11-year-old boy wants this for, if he's not going to play with it out in the open. It specifically states he's not to have it on the street, on a front yard, on a sidewalk. In addition, it talks about the danger of the laser radiation, because there is a laser on this as well, all for the price of $4. I want you to be aware that the ice cream vendors are selling these to the kids on their way home from school. While the school still is in charge of them, because they haven't reached home yet, I have contacted everyone I can think of, and nobody seems to have any responsibility for this. I'm, the police have a file number now, where I'm supposed to give them license numbers, business license, as well as licenses on trucks, if I can. Of course, now, we're out for summer, and I haven't seen an ice cream truck since school was out. But that's the most I could get from anybody. I have called the school. I've called Valleywide, because these trucks park on the parks, parking lots. So I'm just asking, what more can I do? I'm a mad grandma, and I want to continue with this. I want to get these items, these novelty items, off the truck and have the ice cream vendors sell ice cream, like when I was a kid.
Thank you, Mr. August. Before you step away.
Before you step away, I want to know, have you reported this to the city, the code enforcement division?
Oh, code enfor, no. Code enforcement only enforces the food portion of what the ice cream truck sells. This is the second time I've contacted them, because when my grandson was nine, he came home with a laser pointer that he bought off the ice cream truck that clearly stated for 12 years and up.
Let me ask the city manager a question first. Could you give me a little insight into, is there anything that can be done about this? Okay.
I don't have anything at the moment, but we'll look into it. It's the best we can do. We can't really regulate the sale of any type of furnishings on an ice cream truck unless they don't have a business license, which we need to identify who the truck is, what the license is, and then we can go from there.
And apparently, these are all individual operators of these trucks, but they all have the same items? Because I asked my grandson if he knew which truck he got it from. He said, "Oh, they all sell the same stuff." And they have it, now, I'm not supposed to display this, but they have it displayed on, you know, they open a door, and they have a piece of plastic and some shelves, and they have this displayed, but it says that it's not to be displayed. And that, I believe, is governed by the state. I mean, that's, we would have to go to the state to get something like this control?
No, thank you for bringing this to our attention. If it pleases the council, maybe we could have the Public Safety Committee at least have a discussion about this in the future.
I'm willing, I have time, I'm retired, I'd be glad.
A mad grandma, got it. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Those are all the public commenters who've turned in slips.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On to council member updates and comments. Gentlemen, do you have any updates for this meeting? Mr. Denver.
Very recently, I was at an EDA Transportation Expo. I think it was Thursday, June 12th. What a wonderful meeting it was. It was at the baseball park in Paris, just really, just barely into Paris. It was marvelously done. Mary and Ashley, I think, put the thing together, and our city manager made a great presentation which demonstrated all the new things that are coming to Menifee, and it was really marvelous. Second thing is, the student, I went to a Student of the Month Awards. Well, it's the Student of the Month Committee, which has 12, actually has nine meetings a year in Paris at Sizzler for our kids. They had a thank you for all the people who volunteered. They invited the city of Menifee, and I went in your stead, and they just are really impressed with the city of Menifee's involvement in Student of the Month.
Thank you, Mr. Denver. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. All of us get inundated with emails and requests all the time, and I'll just read one line or two lines from this. So this person's, it says, "Developers don't live in the area they are about to destroy. Once they are done, they leave and won't give a damn about any problems they have left behind." So you can, you can see the feelings that come through, and we get a lot of that. First of all, developers don't destroy. They build. And if you don't want somebody to build anything, you're not going to have anything. So my first reaction to this is, the first thing we have to do is appreciate, developers don't make the decision, we make the decision about what we're going to build. Everybody knows I have strong feelings about the fact that maybe we should have bigger lots and less density, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But hopefully, we'll get that out on the floor. We have that as a future item to discuss lot size. But I must say that whether you want them to build a big house or a little house, or you want them to bring in a Taco Bell, or you want them to bring in a really nice restaurant, you know, there's some really strong emotions about that. I was very touched with that young lady's essay tonight. It really struck home. I figured, you know, everybody ought to listen to that. And then I thought, well, maybe we ought to listen to that, you know? Because different people have different opinions, and because they have a different opinion about development than you do or I do, that doesn't make them a bad person, it doesn't make them wrong. It just means that's a different position. So I hope we'll proceed with that. And along that line, I have been wanting to upgrade the socioeconomic profile of Menifee, and that's part of why I'm pounding away on development. And in our town of San Marino, and that's a really upscale town, if you know San Marino, they got a lot of wealthy people there, and I like that kind of a town here. And John keeps saying, "Well, yeah, but those aren't necessarily the nicest people." Well, John might be right. I know that I'd rather have a working man tip me if I'm a waiter than a millionaire. I'm going to get a bigger tip from the working man. And everybody isn't nice just because they're wealthier. What we're hoping for is more funds coming from some of those people, so that it makes life better for everyone, including the poor. And John, in defense of some of your thoughts and some of these wealthy people, the mayor of San Marino just resigned. Not only did he throw his dog poop on his neighbor's lawn, but they got a picture of him doing it. So that means, of course, that whether you're in San Marino or Menifee, I guess the way we should act depends upon more on that young girl's essay than where we live or what we build. I'm looking forward for more cooperation on the council. I know we're going to have it.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. Gentlemen, do you have any? Any update? Mr. Furman?
I'll have a little, just a little historic kind of story. About 25 years ago, a bunch of seniors started playing softball in a dirt lot over on Antelope Road. That was 25 years ago. And today, Menifee has turned, the Menifee Senior Softball League has turned into 10 teams with a wonderful program for seniors to play softball, and it is the largest softball organization in Southern California. They, 10 teams with 13 on a team, that's about 130 participants every week, play softball at Wheatfield Park. And Greg's coming back and going to play next year. I've been playing for 14 years, and anybody that feels like they have the oomph that's over 55, let's get out and play some softball. Thank you.
Mr. Edgerton, do you have enough oomph?
No, I just want one more public announcement. I'm an animal lover, and I got a pool. A lot of you have a pool. We had a duck fly in, the sweetest duck in the world, and she had little legs. My dog tried to attack her. We kept the dog out of the backyard, and we protected this little duck. And she laid eggs, and she had four little babies. They were the cutest things. They were the sweetest things. And so there were five of them in our pool. And of course, they all pooped in our pool. And so we had, we cared about them, and you can't throw them away. I mean, they're little animals, and you're trying to protect them. So yesterday, we had our pool drained, we got it refilled, we had to have an acid wash, and they told me the ducks are going to fly back. They'll fly away, and then they'll fly back. But it cost us $800 to put our pool back in shape for what we did for those little ducks. So just a public announcement, if you have a swimming pool, you might remember that. If they come back to our house, we're going to tell them they have to leave, go out, and get a job.
Where I come from, those two ducks would have been dinner. Mr. August, do you have anything? Just a quick update from my last couple of weeks. I had the privilege of attending the Paloma Valley High School graduation, the Heritage High School graduation, and the Hope Learning Academy graduation. And along the lines of the inspirational words that the young lady wrote and had read from another person for us tonight, just truly inspired by the quality of the youth that's coming out of our community. It gives us all hope for the future, and I think we're going to be in good hands ultimately. Just a request, this is not a request that requires the council's concurrence, but I would ask that the new, the new Community Services Commission, who has not been sworn in yet, Mr. Lennox, I know that you guys are going to put together a program where you're going to meet, but I was driving through a city here in Riverside County earlier yesterday, and I marveled at the fact that they had well-recognized and well-marked equestrian staging areas. And so I called Mr. Rick Croy, who's part of our forthcoming Community Services Commission, and talked to him about it, and sure enough, this particular city had six of those, well-marked, well-maintained. They had tie-ups, fencing, DG, water, and a nice monument sign that marks where people can come and stage their trucks and their trailers and start a ride from those areas. So I would ask that the Community Services Commission in the future add that to their list of things to do and explore for the city of Menifee as an added benefit. Because I know that we have some staging areas that are near here, but they're just outside the city of Menifee, and they're not actually in our city. So anyway, that's what I'd ask you guys to look at in the future. Hearing no additional comments or updates from the council, on to the consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember August, councilmember Furman.
I.
Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, Mayor Man.
I. On to Agenda Item 12.1, Adopt Resolution for the City of Menifee's Fiscal Year 2014-2015 Budget. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Terry Willby, your finance director, has a report for you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to adopt the 2014-15 budget with your approval. Few items, a budget is a financial plan of expenditure that council sets goals and policy, and the budget then allocates the resources to allow staff to carry out that policy. A budget is an annual financial plan, and a balance, definition of a balanced budget is one in which the planned operating expenditures do not exceed operating revenues. A fund, again, is an independent fiscal and accounting entity. Little bit, it shows how your tax dollars at work, for every $1 candy, every $1 candy bar sold, only a penny of the sales tax flows to the city of Menifee. If 32 million candy bars were sold, this would allow the city to realize $320,000, which could be used on capital purchase or other types of expenses. Property taxes, you can see this is a breakdown of a dollar of property tax. Of every dollar of property tax, only 12 cents goes to the city between property tax and fire tax. I don't go through this, we've already done this at the workshop. When revenue equals expenditures, that equals a balanced budget. The city's general fund reserves are our savings account. To go over the budget process, in February, we start with the budget assessment. March, we look at budget policy and priorities and have our kickoff meeting. Budget development occurs in April. Review is in May, and budget adoption with a workshop and council meeting is in June. And all year, throughout the year, we manage the budget. As you can see, the general fund is the majority of the city's budget, with 61%. There's four pillars to this year's budget. No tax increases, we're building a reserve, no added staff position, and increasing public safety services. In summary, the city of Menifee is fiscally sound despite the loss of VLF revenues. We do have growth in other revenues such as development fees due to increased activity through the city. We are spending prudently, making careful financial decisions, and expanding services only as resources allow and council directs. And again, we're doing more with less. Budget highlights for 2014-15, it still does not include the VLF revenue that's been lost in fiscal year 11-12. It is a balanced operating budget with continued emphasis on enhancing service levels as resources allow. We have added funding for one motor officer, and patrol hours equal to two deputies this fiscal year. Community services budget includes funding for key city events, and per previous council direction, the proposed budget includes a light item for Boys and Girls Club sponsorship. General fund revenues, you can see in fiscal year 12-13, the bulk of our revenues, 63% was made up from property and sales tax. In fiscal year 14-15, we do have more diversity in the revenue. You can see that there's more coming from building, planning, and engineering fees, so we have diversified our revenue sources. This next slide shows the growth in tax revenue from fiscal year 11-12. You can see steady increases to fiscal year 14-15 proposed revenues. General fund operating expenditures equal $27.5 million, the largest bulk of that being police and fire. Expenditures by type, you can see the bulk, we're still spending the bulk of our budget on supplies and services. This includes contracts for public safety and other service contracts. The bulk of the city's general fund budget, 63%, is comprised of public safety for police and fire. Personnel for 14-15, there are no new positions being requested at this time, 46 full-time positions, however, one code enforcement, one officer remains unfunded at this time. Changes from last year, increased funding is available for development fee revenue, increase of over 150% from last year's adopted budget. Expenditures in development departments have increased accordingly due to the increased activity. The police budget increased 1.4 million year-over-year, or 15%. It's due to a combination of an increased contract rate of 7% as well as the additional new personnel. General fund capital and one-time requests, these are items we talked about earlier that would come out of the city's reserves or savings account, similar to, you would buy something out of your savings account. $256,000 total capital and one-time expenditures. The bulk of this is related to outfitting the new police personnel that will come on board this year. In summary, we have estimated revenues, operating revenues 27.6 million, operating expenditures 27.4, transfers out of 147,000, leaves an operating surplus of $6,228. Projected fund balance at the end of this year, fiscal Projected fund balance at the end of this year, fiscal year 14-15, is 7.7 compared to the operating expenditures, which is our benchmark. That would leave a projected fund balance percentage of 28 percent of operating expenditures. The fund balance percentage that is required by council policy is 25 percent. So we are actually above the level set by policy. We do have a variety of other funds outside the general fund. Special revenue funds are restricted to specific expenditures. These are similar to gas tax, Measure A. Capital project funds are used to identify revenues that will be used to construct capital facilities. And we have one debt service fund that is associated with the payment of principal and interest for the city's total road improvement program financing. Total for other funds, revenues of 12.1, expenditures of 13.5. This is some items that will be carried over from the previous year and use that beginning surplus fund Capital improvement program, we have $5.6 million of new projects that'll be, we're requesting approval for this year. This is the second year of the five-year CIP that was approved last year. Major project is the Bradley Road Bridge project. Action plan for this next year, recovery is well underway within the city. We're maintaining prudent spending plan, increasing existing revenue sources, develop additional revenue sources to increase diversity of revenue, and continue our vigorous economic development plan. And these are just some of the expected business openings within the next year that we'll continue to add, provide services to the residents as well as revenue for the city. Recommended action is to adopt the fiscal year 2014-15 budget as presented. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Willoughby. Do we have any questions of staff? Mr. Furman?
The second pie chart you had, could you put that back up? Way in the beginning it was.
This one?
No, we'll come, no, not that one. It was like your very second one, right in the beginning. Well, we're gonna talk about this one too, okay? This one here for just a second. Property tax, that's a property tax we pay on our property, and we get 37 percent of that?
No. This is, property taxes that the city receives make up 37 percent of the total general fund revenue. Out of every property tax dollar that you pay on your house, the city only gets 12 cents.
Okay, all right, okay.
I'll go back to that.
I think that's, that was the first slide that you had, where you had the 12 percent.
12 cents.
Yeah.
Right. Right there.
Yeah, okay.
Those two little tiny bars at the bottom, that's what the city gets, and that includes the fire protection tax.
Okay, all right, that's, okay, I wanted to make sure that was a correlation, because you had 37 percent.
It's 37 percent of total general fund revenue.
Gotcha. So we get 12 cents out of every dollar for the city.
Property tax dollar, that's correct.
Incredible.
Thank you very much.
Mr. August?
First of all, I told you this at the workshop, Terry, I really wanna thank you for putting pictures in the budget this year, the candy bars and the fire engines, because I'm starting to understand it a little bit better now. I noticed that our budget, except for the CIP program, is fairly similar in some ways to what it was last year. So would it be fair to character, how would you characterize the financial health of the city right now and what the health of the future might be? Are we, we're heading in the right direction? Any comments you'd like to make on that, please?
We are heading in the right direction. If you go back to the fund balance policy, which we, where council set direction of what you wanted, which is where you set basically what your bank account percentage should be against your expenditures, we are over what the policy was set. So we're very healthy. And you go back to that slide where all those businesses, that's just gonna be more revenue for the general fund, and as well as providing amenities for residents. So it's very healthy.
Marvelous. Thank you for that presentation. Are there any additional questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the fiscal year 14-15 budget as presented. Should move. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well done, Ms. Willoughby. Thank you very kindly. And before you step away, Mr. Johnson, I believe we have something that we need to do. A gentleman, if you would join us all up front.
Come on, you can't get away that quick. For those of you that don't know, Terry Willoughby is the city's first finance director. That was a permanent finance director, and Terry's gonna be leaving us. Terry accepted a position with the San Bernardino City Municipal Water District. She'll be leaving on the 27th. She keeps smiling about it, I don't know why. But I wanted to make sure that Terry went out in style, so I wanna thank you for your service to the city. I wanna thank you for being an encouragement to me as a city manager, and I wanna thank you for instituting a number of, for those of you that don't know, we didn't have a number of policies when Terry came to us. There was no financial foundation really to what we were doing. And you put the checks and balances in place, you explained them to the council and me, you got those policies adopted. We just wanna thank you for your service.
Thank you for, Mr. Johnson, for giving me some ideas on what else to say, because it's true that we didn't have some of those foundational policies in place, but you brought that expertise to this new city. And you, you gave us a budget calendar for the city to follow. You helped us establish the reserve policy. Not only did you help us establish the reserve policy, but you helped us establish two additional special reserves, which is one for a future city hall, and the second is for a reserve fund for a future, future animal control shelter. Now, those are, you know, decades away, maybe 10 or 15 years, but the fact that this council, through your leadership and your tutelage to put those in place, you gotta start somewhere. And to have those things going into the bank at the end of the year and develop that for the future is really good, and we thank you very much for that. On top of that, we have, in addition to the budget being balanced for all these many years in a row, we also have, we dipped into the operational reserve a little bit to balance it, but this budget that we just adopted tonight was the first time, I believe, in three years that we didn't have to use the operational reserve. We actually balanced the budget, and then we also had the 25 percent reserve plus the additional three. And so because of those types of things, for the third year in a row, the City of Menifee, as a result of your leadership, has also, has been awarded another financial award from the Government Finance Officers Association, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, presented to you, the City of Menifee, thank you, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended in 2013. So well done to you, congratulations. And I think that we have some other comments from some of the other council members. So congrats.
I do wanna make a comment to Terry. She wears several hats around the city. One of the hats is she's our animal coordinator. And I don't know if most of you are aware, but we, over the last several months, we've changed our animal shelter from Ramona, that's having a lot of problems, over to the county. Terry was instrumental, instrumental in getting us all the information and doing her due diligence, and what I really, really appreciated was, she's been very sincere in working with all the animal rescue groups out in the city. And it's meant a lot to me, it's meant a lot to Mr. Edgerton, and we're really gonna miss you in that capacity. And I understand Gina's gonna be taking it over, and I've already checked Gina out. She, she used to have an animal somewhere, so that's about what, you still do, okay. So we're looking forward to working with you on it. And I couldn't thank you enough for all you've done for us, but you are leaving town before we make our big decision coming up. All right, and thank you very much.
I just wanted to thank you, Terry, along the same line, because it had been a couple of years, several years, we were talking about animal control and what we were gonna do with the animals, and we were kinda floundering around. And then Rob, in his infinite wisdom assigned, Terry, you take care of it. She got it done real quick. Then we were able to make some decisions based on good advice from you and good organization from you. I really appreciate that. I know everyone on the council does, Greg particularly. In reference to putting our finances in order, I was the first mayor of the city, and it was Scott Mann within weeks after we were a council, it started raising hell about our internal finances, and things were not the way they should be. And you really brought it to fruition and made it happen for us, and vindicated a lot of what Scott was concerned about a long time ago. We're gonna miss you. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And with that being said, we thank you for everything that you've done. We wish you the best. As we say in the Navy Fair Winds and following seas, we know where you're gonna be. You're leaving before the end of the fiscal year, and I just wanna know, did those flowers come out of the budget? Oh, okay. So with that being said, we'd like to present this certificate.
I really wanna thank everyone and Rob for your, all your support and staff, and especially my staff. Wendy's here, she's worked hard. I couldn't have done this without her. Margarita's here. And it takes a team, and we've really been a great team together. And while I look forward to my new opportunities, I am sad to leave here. And I appreciate everything, and the great leadership from council.
Well done, you. Well, all right. Thank you very kindly. Onto agenda item 12.2, adopt resolution number 14-380, of intention to establish a City of Menifee Community Facilities District number 2014-1 Town Center, and authorize the levy of a special tax to finance certain services therein. Mr. Johnson, staff report?
Mayor and council, I would call on Terry Willoughby to give her final staff report to you of her Menifee career. Terry?
Thank you. A little bit, you're all familiar with the Town Center project. State legislator enacted the Melrose Community Facility Act in 1982 to assist public agencies in financing public improvements. It authorizes cities to form districts to finance public improvements, and allows us to impose special taxes approved by two-thirds vote of the registered owners within the district. The purpose of this item is to prove the CFD boundaries, designate the CFD name, which will be 2014-1. We've had two CFDs that were formed before. This is only a maintenance CFD, there's no debt issuance with this. Declaring intention to form the CFD and levy the taxes, and we're setting the time and place for public hearing for CFD formation. The CFD is designed to finance the maintenance of improvements within the initial zone of the Town Center development, such as lighting, parkways, streets, roads, and open space. Financing these improvements through the CFD will allow the, will assess the costs of these, to the specific owners using these improvements and protect the city's general fund. Staff has worked diligently with all the stakeholders in this project to arrive at a budget that will translate to a rate that is fair to all parties. The initial zone will be assessed at a rate of 1,033 per non-residential acre and $95 per residential acre. The special tax requirement for the first year is $148,930. Developer is supportive of the formation of this CFD and is in the audience. The next step will be a public hearing on August 6, 2014, at which time the council will formally consider the approval, and they'll allow any public testimony at that time, and the election of the landowners will be held at that time. With that, I'll take any questions. And we have Will Dan Associates here, who were our consultants on the project, and the developers are here as well, if you'd like to hear them.
Mr. Furman?
Is, is this district made up of businesses and residential properties?
There will be residential eventually. In this initial zone, it's only the commercial, it's only the rich development and Town Center. So there's no residential in this particular zone. But within the district, there will eventually be residential.
Yeah, so this district will be kinda checkerboarded with the commercial stuff and the real estate will be...
Each will be a separate zone of the district, and it'll come back to you when we set each zone up.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just for clarification, this is for the specific, specific plan for the Regent Town Center. So it'll have different zones, as Terry just explained, but this is just, this is just encompassing the specific plan area for the Regent Town Center.
Very well. Are there any additional questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution this evening.
Your Honor, may I have two motions? May I have first the motion for the accepting of the petition from the developer. The second would then be the adopting of Resolution 14-380.
Is there a motion to accept? A second, please?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Council, excuse me, Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
And a motion to adopt Resolution 14-380.
Should move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very well. Roll call vote, please.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Onto city attorney reports.
We have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you kindly. City manager reports?
We have an update from Public Works. I'll turn it over to Jonathan Smith, your Public Works Director, city engineer.
Thank you all guests for coming.
Thank you very much, city manager. Just a couple of quick updates. Vista Way and Casablanca and Quail Valley were recently prepped as part of the Quail Valley resurfacing program. Asphalt leveling course was laid out there, and we're getting ready for additional repairs. We're working in conjunction with the Quail Valley homeowners, meeting with them at their meetings and taking their input. This is a first step into managing the potholes and the poorer street surfaces out there. So moving forward with that. The other thing that we have moved forward with, thank you very much, was the hiring of a new senior inspector who started on June 9. Mr. Don Sharp comes to us from the City of Poway, where he worked there for 13 years as a senior inspector. He has already made end roads to improving how we manage our inspection services in the city. Update on the Newport Road median, that, it will go out to bid July 1. Construction is scheduled to begin August, and it will be complete by September. So that's all I have for my update tonight. Any questions?
Just the Quail Valley resurfacing, is that part of the overall pavement management plan that was presented as part of the budget, or is this, was that done from a previous decision, a previous financial decision that we had made?
That, that was done part of the CSA 86.
Okay.
Analysis that was done prior to our incorporation. We've updated that analysis, and these streets have result, these streets are the ones that have resulted in treatment.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I just wanted to thank Jonathan Smith and his team in Public Works. Obviously, this is a project that, that we've had funding for for several years that hasn't gone off the ground. Our former city engineer started the process, and Jonathan came in and picked up the ball. And although we needed to do a little bit more research and a little bit more engineering, we're actually on the way to getting those streets paved that were, that were put into that CSA 86, the funds, and it's starting to look pretty good out there. So thank you, Jonathan, and your team.
Mr. Furman?
I'd also like to thank you, Jonathan, for attending to Quail Valley meetings with me and speaking to the people and addressing their concerns. They really appreciate you and have got to like you very much.
Oh.
I get lots of good comments when I'm over there.
Well, thank you.
So, they're counting on you for some things in the future.
Well, I got a great team behind me, so...
All right. And I thank Raphael, too.
Great, thank you.
Mr. August?
I too, I'm gonna get in line on this, Jonathan. I just wanna thank you and your team. I'm not sure if Joe Gonzalez is on your team, but if he's not, we'll thank him anyway tonight. Raphael Martinez and that group. It's almost as if I have to go out and tell people to call you guys up because you're so good. And I've gotten tremendous feedback from, for, about you and your team. So I too wanna thank you and for the sign, and for tending to a lot of the problems... thank you, and for the sign, and for tending to a lot of the problems in District, well, at least in the core portion of District 1, so thank you.
Come on.
Thank you, gentlemen, and for a part-time actor, you're a better city engineer. That's an inside story for those of you who have not seen him on TV. He has been on TV. On with that, Mr. Johnson, do you have any additional manager reports?
Nothing further.
Gentlemen, do we have any future agenda requests? Mr. Denver?
I'm hoping that we can get in Romaland a monument saying Romaland subdivision of the City of Menifee. If I could get a second on that.
Click it.
Thank you.
I like that idea.
Yeah. Is it, we have a motion and a second, can, is that enough direction to staff to just add it into our capital improvement?
Yes.
Could we add, could we add Quail Valley to that also?
Quail Valley has one at the fire station on Getz and Avenue de Roble.
Okay.
Marvelous. Good job. Thank you. Hearing no additional future agenda requests, this meeting is adjourned.